And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, just a couple of announcements. The municipal center is closed for paving until Monday, July 31st. All our departments can be reached by telephone and email during their normal business hours throughout this closure. In the evenings, the building will be open for our regularly scheduled board and committee meetings. The Grafton Police Department will host their annual national night out on Tuesday, August 1st. Grafton residents are invited to join forces with thousands of communities nationwide for the crime and drug prevention event. Next, we have a public hearing. And I think we've got Fiona.
Yes, hello, would you prefer me to share my screen? I know the applicant is also here, Mr. Bobrowski, and I think that Bill should be there in person.
Sure is.
Do I need to read the legal notice?
Yes, I believe that you do.
Okay, so the legal notice is pursuant to the provisions of Chapters 40A and 40R of the Massachusetts General Laws. The Grafton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, in Conference Room A of the Grafton Municipal Center, located at 30 Providence Road and remotely via Zoom, starting at 7:00 PM. The Zoom link will be posted on the July 18th, 2023 Select Board Agenda. Chapter 40R states that the Chief Executive Officer must hold a public hearing on any application to establish or amend a Chapter 40R Smart Growth Overlay District in the town. The public hearing is required by statute before the submission of a formal application to the Commonwealth Department of Housing and Community Development, now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Anyone wishing to may attend the hearing in person or via Zoom. The application of the town, prepared with the assistance of the Claremont Companies Two Lakeshore Center, 4th Floor, Bridgewater, Massachusetts, to establish a new Sub-District B in the pre-existing North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District, NGTVOD, is the subject of the public hearing. The application proposes to allow for the construction of up to 233 units of multifamily mixed-income rental housing in two buildings located near the North Grafton MBTA Station with accompanying marking on Map 5 Lot 2 and portion of Map 5 Lot 11. The lot contains approximately 10.73 acres with access at 5 Millennial Drive. The Chapter 40R application, which includes a proposed Smart Growth Overlay District zoning bylaw amendment to the NGTVOD and a proposed zoning map, can be viewed at the Planning Department and at the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours at the Grafton Municipal Center. The application can also be viewed online at www.grafton-ma.gov/202/Planning/Department. I move the board vote to open the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Others in favor, by roll call. Andy?
Jefferson, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Austin, aye?
Fully, aye.
Motion carries. All right, we are open. Who wants to take it at this point?
So.
Mark.
Yep.
I'm, good evening, everybody, good evening. Mark Bobrowski for Claremont Companies. My office is in Concord, Massachusetts, although I am here virtually tonight, obviously. And I believe Bill Lovett's in the audience with you there?
He sure is. And welcome to the meeting, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Bill, would you like to just introduce Claremont briefly?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bill Lovett, with the Claremont Companies. We are based in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. We're a family real estate office that specializes in multifamily hotel, and we do some industrial development and management of those assets. We have approximately 3,000 apartment units in Massachusetts currently, and we're excited to be in Grafton with this exciting project.
Outstanding.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to run you through this PowerPoint. Feel free to stop me at any point in time and ask questions, or you can reserve them until the PowerPoint is done. I've tried to keep it as simple and straightforward as possible. And with that, can we go on to the second slide?
Absolutely, and if any board members have any questions along the way, just raise your hand.
Right. So, what we're doing here, if you go back to the first slide, what we're doing here is amending the existing North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District, a 40R that the town adopted roughly in 2018. That created a Sub-District A at the state hospital. And the plan for the Sub-District A, very different than what we're proposing for Sub-District B at the MBTA Station. For example, there was a mixed-use component in Sub-District A that wouldn't apply here, and it was adaptive reuse, I believe, as well, whereas this is new construction. So with that, if you'd go on to the next slide. This is just an overview of the proposed project. As we said, 233 units. You can see some amenities located in the center of the quad. It's two buildings, and the buildings are five stories in height. There'll be more architetchuals as we go through the PowerPoint. Next, please. So, I don't know how many of you were around in 2018, but I'm going to give you a basic primer here. So, Chapter 40R was adopted roughly 2004, 2005. Regulations weren't adopted until a year or so afterwards. The idea here is that this is smart growth. So, there must be a proposal at an eligible location. And if the community, and this is your application, not ours, if the community applies and what is now, what was DHCD finds the application acceptable, there's a series of carrots here that the law has for municipality moving forward. Next slide, please. It's all about location. So, the eligible locations for a 40R include...
You are on mute, Mr. Bobrowski.
It includes any location within a half mile of a rail transit, a rail or a train station, and other transit nodes that wouldn't apply. Or, an area of concentrated development. Generally, I think of this as half-under asphalt today. Or, a suitable location, meaning it doesn't fit Category 1 or 2, but DHCD still thinks it would be a worthy opportunity. Next slide. So, this is a example of something near a transit station. I've been pleased to be Haverhill's land use lawyer for the past 20, 25 years. And in the early days of Chapter 40R, they made virtually all of their downtown, there's their brand-new federally-funded rail station, a 40R Smart Growth District. Next slide. I'm, this is very different, but it's also a good example. This is the old Lincoln Park in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. I actually toured it under that roller coaster back 20 years ago, or damn close to it. And it's an area of concentrated development, approximately 318 units. It's partially built, not all of it is built. But the state deemed this to be a worthy location. It's right on Route 6 as you go from the town of Dartmouth into the town of Westport. Next slide. And this is a suitable location, project that just was done in November of last year in North Attleboro. The area that you can see under the pin was a driving range, and it's at a crucial intersection where North Attleboro meets Plainville. DHCD approved this in the fall, and the vote of the City Council of North Attleboro was just before Thanksgiving, if I remember correctly. Again, 300, I think 311 units in this one. So, the idea is that, the idea is really born of a gentleman by the name of Ted Carmen. He got on the train in Melrose, where he lived, and he took the line north, and he got off in every stop, and he said, "What a waste. We've got locations here that really would be useful for job training, for housing, obviously, for transportation into other places where economics demand services and work." Next slide, please. And you fit into that location perfectly with a location near transit. So, the Claremont parcel, including the adjacent parcel, which we'll talk about in a second, or a piece of it, is 10.73 acres. It's vacant land, it's at the MBTA Station, and it has access to public sewer and water. Next slide. That's an overview from 30,000 feet. There you can see the existing Sub-District A at the former state hospital, and there's our Sub-District B alongside of it. Go ahead. Here's a close-up. The parcel to the left, and it is a parcel, is part of what is property Map 5 Lot 11, if I can read that. It's kind of, I got magnifiers on, but it's still kind of hard. So, we've got a purchase and sale agreement and site control over that parcel, contingent upon this moving forward. That parcel will be ANR-ed off of the existing owner's land, and it will be conveyed to us per the terms of the purchase and sale agreement. Next slide, please. The density is sort of non-negotiable here, at least the minimum density. In a project with single-family units, there must be eight units per acre, roughly one per every 5,000 square feet. In a townhouse or smaller multifamily project, there's 12 units per acre, and you can only have two or three unit buildings. You can't have four unit buildings, which I find to be a drawback for these kinds of projects. And in the project that we're proposing this evening, it's a minimum of 20 units per acre for a developable land zone for multifamily residential use. The key there is developable land. Some of our parcel is wet. When you take the 10.73 acres of total land acreage and subtract out the wetlands, we're down at about 9.02 acres. Next slide. So, this is just what the housing will look like. There's single-family at eight units an acre, there's townhouse construction at 12 units an acre, and there's various types of projects depicted there at 20 or more units per acre. Go ahead. The density of Sub-District B, as I said, is about 9.02 acres of developable land, with 233 units proposed. Simple math, divide the acres into the dwelling units, and the proposed density is 25.83 units per acre. That's just a function of the map and the math. In Haverhill, for example, we had some existing buildings owned by New York REITs, and we did the math based on the acreage of the parcel, which wasn't more than an acre and a half, but it's an eight-story building, so the density in some of those Haverhill districts was in excess of 150 units an acre, after we subtracted 20% for open space within the building and equipment rooms and things of that sort. I don't read too much in the 25 versus 20. This is the project we're proposing to build, it's on 9.02 acres. That's just the math that reflects that. Please. So, this is what Claremont is proposing to build. As I said, it's a five-story building. It sits in a pretty remote location from other neighbors. I believe that the property under the parcel that we have under control allows no residential units. And as I said, it's at the train station. Next slide, please. So, what we've done is mapped the district in accordance with the DHCD regulations, and we've taken only some land which is wet and called it unbuildable or not developable. And that's a very simple way to use 40R number crunching. And as I said, we get 25 and some change for the minimum density. Go ahead. There's your proposed Sub-District B zoning map. Go ahead. So, part of the application in front of you tonight, but by no means the only ingredient, is a zoning bylaw for Smart Growth Overlay District. And it is rife with affordability requirements, which we cannot change. In the old days, when the program was first starting out, I remember I wrote the first 40R bylaw for the town of Norwood, which was converting a Catholic church into a small project. But all of this has become routinized now at DHCD. They provide the template. We track-change the template so that they can see what we changed. These affordability requirements do not change. They will not accept changes to the affordability requirements. But it also includes dimensional density and parking regulations, the identification of the Plan Approval Authority, design standards and guidelines, and waiver and plan amendment authority and procedures. Please, change. On affordability, Chapter 40R requires not less than 20% of the units of more than 12 units to be affordable. So, that's what we've proposed. This is not like the earlier Sub-District A, in which 25% of the units were affordable. You are incorporating, I believe, the provisions of MBTA communities into this as well. And the MBTA community program has reached a conclusion that 25% in a 40R district is a disincentive, not necessarily in Grafton, but in other places. And so, their guidance is that the maximum should be 20% for a 40R, where the 40R will count for MBTA purposes. And the affordability of these units is moderate income, 80% of area-wide median income, which is the standard, it's coin of the realm for most 40B projects and also for most 40R projects. Please, go on. The approval process is something that we've initiated this evening. This is the public hearing on the application. It's not on the zoning, it's on the application, and it's got two sides, the zoning and the picture of the project. If you decide this evening to approve the application, it will go off to DHCD, and it will hit the desk of William Raillt, who is the Program Director in Boston of Chapter 40R. He generally takes about 90 days, which is just before your fall-scheduled town meeting, to reach a conclusion as to whether or not you've earned a preliminary determination of eligibility. I believe in your earlier applications, you actually put the zoning bylaw on the warrant before Bill gave you that. And so, we can't go forward until DHCD gives us that letter. That's project eligibility determination. And it's incredibly important with regard to the zoning, because if we don't wait, and then we want to amend the zoning, we have to go back to Bill, and that stalls the process out. It depends on what Bill is doing and how busy he is at that point in time. Next slide. Following adoption of the 40R district, the next step, the most important step, is the plan approval process. I've drafted this in consultation with Evan and Fiona to make the planning board into the Plan Approval Authority. And the next slide indicates that, I'm sorry, it's not on the next slide, but the next slide indicates that the Plan Approval Authority will open a public hearing upon application of Claremont for plan approval. Plan approval, as defined in the statute, is the equivalent of site plan approval. So, the design standards, the dimensional standards are all, and the affordability standards are all required components of an application. But where the community has received what's known as an incentive payment, your incentive payment, it's a sliding scale, will be from 201 to 500 units, earning you $350,000 at the time, after the time the town approves the zoning bylaw. Because DHCD will likely cut that check pretty early, in your case, since you don't need infrastructure improvements to prove to them that the project can be built, DHCD wants from you, in exchange, a guarantee that the project can make an application and will be permitted. So, it's pretty much as of right, but it's subject to your conditions, and the conditions, as long as reasonable, have the force and effect of law. Next slide, please. There are more payments for you under Chapter 40R, and that's for bonus units. When the building permits or single permit is pulled for the 233-unit project, DHCD will cut a check for $3,000 for each unit, including market rate units. So, the total would be $3,000 times 233 units. Next slide. And that would yield, if my math is correct, a total payment, one-time payment to the town of $1,049,000. There's also a provision called Chapter 40S, in which the legislature made it possible for some communities to receive school payments for the children who are actually residents of the 40R project. Their cost of education would be offset by the state for a period of time, based on a formula. I've only seen the formula run once in Lunenburg, and it did not result in payments to the town. I want to be completely upfront about that. If you're doing it, you're doing it for the benefit of the 40R project. I would not expect any benefit to the town of Grafton under Chapter 40S. Next slide. If you want more information, here's some web and other, you know, online information that you can pull. And that's essentially the presentation. There's the project again.
Thank you, Mr. Bobrowski. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, Andy does have his hand up.
Mr. Jefferson?
Mr. Chair, I was wondering offhand if there are any restrictions or requirements for where those incentive funds can be spent or stored?
No. I mean, you would put them into the general fund, but you don't have any restrictions as to how they're spent.
No, I've already seen it, so.
So, I was pretty sure that the last time we adopted a 40R, it went to town meeting for adoption.
That's right.
Is that not the case for this?
No, that is the case. It goes to town meeting. Town meeting vote has changed in terms of quantity now. It was a 2/3 vote like any zoning amendment, but the governor's housing legislation from now coming up on three years ago made it a 50-plus 1% vote.
Mr. Chair. So, one thing that happened in the past with the original 40R and the Eight Pine Project is that the town went to, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but the town went to town meeting before we got the approval letter from DHCD. And the state has made it very clear in multiple correspondences that we are not to do that again, which is why we're doing it, that's why we're doing it this way. So, you would, you're basically, you're petitioning the state to give you your letter in order to move forward, to then go to town meeting and get the zone actually approved by the voters.
And on a positive note, the state gave me the corrections that they wanted to make to what you adopted back in 2018, and I folded those into the new Sub-District B. Not only Sub-District B, but the entire North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District 40R. In other words, when I got the template from DHCD, they had marked it up, and then said, "Do what you want to do now for Sub-District B."
Got it. Andy, did you have another question?
It did, kind of a follow-up. I'm sure it's something that we would have to discuss at a later point, but I figured I'd ask now. Is there an opportunity for the town to use any of those funds to increase the affordability count from 20 to 25? I know you said it's generally frowned upon as a requirement, but if it was something that the town were funding itself to move that incentive, is there any room there?
I, this is a very early stage in the relationship between the MBTA people and the 40R people and the lawyers that rule them. And my understanding, and Fiona can amplify this if she has better information, is that MBTA has decided that they don't want to send out the message that 25% is, can be required by a municipality for a 40R to count for MBTA, because they think that'll be a disincentive for MBTA. And when you think about the two programs in relation to one another, I think MBTA is where the state is putting its eggs. That's the basket that they want to see go forward. I had a conversation with Bill Raillt not more than two or three weeks ago on a project that I wanted him to look at, and he said, "You know, Mark, I get it. These projects are project-specific, and you're just giving me a map of the parcel that you want to rezone 40R. Why can't you ever give me a broader area that would make sense as a district, even if some of the land is in different ownership and some of the buildings are already up?" And I said, "Okay, that's a practical planning approach, but it's not a practical-political approach. And oh, by the way, look at what Grafton's doing. It's piggybacking on Sub-District A with Sub-District B, so there's no functional difference between what he wants towns to do upfront and what Grafton is doing over a longer haul." But I think what the state wants MBTA to be is more the latter. It wants it to be a well-planned district in which there's, you know, clearly an area, not just a parcel, but clearly an area that can serve the housing needs of local people. So, and I think that's going into the 20 versus 25% calculation. Do you have anything you want to add, Fiona?
No, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head. You know, the feasibility of projects is definitely a cause or concern from the state that's been reiterated. We're already have a request for qualifications that is out on the street to do a feasibility analysis for one zone. So, we're really trying to merge what's the requirement for 40R and the MBTA communities to achieve our compliance, as well as create a, you know, much-needed housing in this area. I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer, and in terms of state compliance, it's, it really is, it's a perfect fit. So, yes, I, everything that Mark said, basically.
Mr. Chairman.
To my knowledge, unless somebody knows differently, I don't know of an MBTA Section 3A approval yet. So, this is really, you're out in front.
Yes, yeah, we're at the forefront.
Mr. Almo?
Any consideration to some kind of retail, convenience shop? I realize you probably, it's not a destination for Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts, but something that could bring in additional tax revenue?
So, we, this really is not a place for retail traffic. I could tell you something different, but it really isn't. Nothing would survive and would end up with vacant storefronts, especially if the Pine Street project in the retail there wasn't able to get traction. Having this property tucked up is not, it's just not feasible.
Mr. Chair. Good seeing you guys again.
Thank you.
You know, great project, great location, great developer, and I think this board should move ahead and approve this.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Just a question, and actually, maybe, will you recognize, never mind.
Yeah, I want, is there? Does your honor come up? Opportunity for discussion.
No, I was only going to speak to him.
My name is Jim Brown. I'm the owner, with my wife Carrie Anne Brown, of Primary Colors, right next door, right next door. And, you know, I had to kind of slow the momentum a little bit about there being such a remote location. We're right next door to them. We're a manufacturing company. We make plastic, we make color for plastic. The Claremont folks have been tremendous to us, have been very upfront, told us about this meeting tonight. I am not the owner of the building, Judy Michelson is the owner of the building. She needs to be better notified of these meetings, a little bit more lead time, so she can be here as well. I wouldn't want you to submit the application without hearing my concerns with it. Definitely against the project, as a manufacturer of two shifts and with hopes of going to three shifts. Prior to, I understand this is just a hearing of filing the application, but I think it's, I think it's important for you to hear.
Yes.
Our side of it. Great. The land itself, yes, there's wetlands. The land that isn't wet is largely ledge. Very concerned about the blasting that's going to be happening there. We have sensitive equipment in our operation. I'd like to know how we'll be protected in that. Obviously, there's a lot that would fall on us to protect ourselves in that regard, but it is a concern. We located this operation in, in a industrial area. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have favored putting our operation in a neighborhood. It's going to be 233 units of unpredictability from my standpoint, for a business owner. What you yearn for is predictability and understanding what's going to be in front of you every day, understanding that it's very rarely the case. But with families there, with kids there, I understand it's an apartment. I understand it's not condos, so they'll be fairly temporary. However, we, you know, that road accommodates our business with 10 or 15 trucks a day coming and going at the present time. I do understand there's another plastic operation that's going to be developing down, also sharing that driveway that we have. That's going to be a concern of theirs. Having, having manufacturing and residential together, you just don't know what kind of concerns they're going to have with our manufacturing process. I'm a little concerned about security. Are we putting a fence up? Are we, you know, what's, what are we going to have to do to react to this? And I understand there's plenty of momentum, great project, great builders. I would agree with that, except that I don't necessarily. And it's a little bit of loss of trust that we developed there as an institute, you know, that's, that was originally a biotech park that didn't quite take off back in the day and opened up for light manufacturing, which is great. We've benefited greatly. I thank you folks for your dedication of the town. It's been a great town to be in. All the facilities, all the support that we've had from police and whatnot has been tremendous. I can't say enough about it. Now you're going to have school buses, I would imagine, coming and going with industrial trucks. It's not a big road, and so it's a concern.
Mr. Brown, you mentioned that, so when you talk about the school buses and the trucks, it's on Millennium Drive. So it's, you know, as you're exiting Pine Street, basically, it's to the left there into that.
Well, it's Centennial first and then Millennium, and we're nine Millennium Drive.
And that's right next door?
Right next door. So we're at the end of the, just at the rotary there.
All right. And how close is that approximately?
Real close. We abut.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
The next driveway it'll be.
It's the next driveway.
I mean, it'll be long driveways.
It's real close. I mean, the proposed land sale is right, you know, it's close. How close, I'm not positive about where the building's going to situate on that land.
Sure.
But the blasting will be significant.
So to some of the concerns, I think, it's indicated that, you know, we can impose reasonable conditions. So, you know, some of these things like, oh, we're going to do fencing, security, those sort of concerns, I would imagine, would be subject to some reasonable conditions. I'll just say that.
May I chime in there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, of course.
That is, in fact, the case. Bill and I have had experience with ledge before. We did a project in Saugus. Nothing's ledgeier than Saugus. And it involved 300 units just on the northbound side of Route 1, and there's considerable blasting. Not only was there ledge, but it was in the close proximity of a Tennessee gas line, and we had to work around that. There are protocols. We had a gentleman who was in the business come to the ZBA meeting, and he went all through the protocols under the state building code and under, you know, it's his business. He explained it to people. I believe that the board will also have the authority to require a traffic study, however detailed they want it. Either what, it'll either be a full traffic impact analysis, or it'll be a report on key intersections. So all of that is in the hands of the planning board as they enter into the plan approval process. If they put conditions on the project, we have to live up with them. It's like any other zoning decision. Those conditions are enforced by the building commissioner, and he can obviously enlist any experts that he needs to do the job.
Thank you, Mr. Bobrowski. Mr. Jefferson.
Mr. Chair, it was mentioned earlier that one of the abutters would be possibly selling additional property for this project. Is it safe to assume that Mr. Brown is not that abutter?
We are, again, we're not the owner of the land in the building. We're the owner of the business. The owner of the, the owner of the land in the building has been in discussions about selling that piece of land, yes. That was presented as an opportunity for Claremont to not put up a retaining wall. That was an area that they needed to be able to maybe put some riprap or something in there that would replace an expensive retaining wall that would be there. So there was motivation, I think, on both sides to sell it. It wasn't a whole lot of impact.
Any other questions?
Yes, so that land is for nothing? That lot? Would you, if you were to buy that lot?
I think it helps to buffer the projects, and it also helps in the density calculation.
So if, could, is it possible to pull the slide up one more time with that plan? Thank you. So we approached the owner of the land in the building, Primary Colors. I forget the exact timing on it, but probably a year. As we were looking, and the point is, it is a ledge site. We are well aware of that. And the way the grade works is, and I apologize for not having a grading plan, but the, from the Primary Colors property, it slopes down to the wetland. So we spent a terrific amount of time examining different options for putting a pad in that would be the most economical, because this is a big, it's expensive land site, from an infrastructure standpoint. So by acquiring the additional acreage from Primary Colors, we were able to actually minimize more of the blasting and be able to create more of a transition from the property. What it'll actually do is it will, will be below, so will be below the Primary Colors land in the property. But we were very careful and worked very closely with Judy with regard to making sure that the lot still conformed, both lots are conforming. So we spent a lot of time working through why this was being done and how it was being done. It also gives us some additional parking area if necessary.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So that's Lot 11 that we're talking about?
Correct.
And that lot would essentially have nothing on it and only serve primarily as a buffer between Primary Colors and this piece of property that you, this piece of land that you want to set. I'm looking at the map. I think I'm reading it right.
I'm working on sharing the power.
It would not, it's not intended to be open space. It's intended to be, we would use it for grading, and we would use it for, there's some parking, and right now there's some exercise areas programmed.
So the shaded area is?
Right, right here, if you can see it.
Correct.
So I can, if I may, I can show you on this.
Yeah, so I deferred because I saw Jim coming up, but I've been up there to Primary Colors, and I'm familiar with the area and the potential impact. And so while I agree that, you know, in theory, on paper, you know, this looks like a great site, my only concern is the impact to him and his business and that, you know, to your point, when you came into our town, this was light industrial, and that's what it was billed to you, and so we are changing that or potentially changing that, right, with residential. And so I suppose anything that we can do to, you know, mitigate concerns or lessen the impact, right, during construction and thereafter, it'll, it'll be a change to what it was, you know, what was proposed or what you thought you were getting into. So I just wanted to voice my concerns relative to that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Elevation difference, or what are you taking on cubic yards as far as ledge goes?
So the idea is not to remove.
So you're going to process it on site?
The idea is to process it and effectively take the higher portion that's by the Primary Colors, that we're buying from Primary Colors, and move it to the lower side of the project.
So in, in yardage, I'm sure you have this or elevation?
We do. I don't have it up hand.
Okay, so you, so you don't know what the, you don't know what the elevation change is going to be? And have you, have you done any borings to determine the type of ledge it is?
We don't need to do borings to understand the quantities. At this point, it's just the quantities. We've got the topography done, but we haven't done any borings.
Okay.
I think the site contractors that we had out there were able to look at it to identify if it was going to be processable, if it was going to be soft.
Yep, but that's what I, that's what I'm asking. Is it softer, is it hard?
Yeah, it's, we can, we can reuse it and process it. Maybe, I'm not going to say we can reuse and process 100% of it on site, but obviously, our objective is to balance the site.
And you don't know whether it's striated or anything like that?
I don't know.
So what I'm trying to do is, and this gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Jim Brown.
Jim, I'm trying to determine how much ledge, a blasted ledge, a hammered ledge, you know. The blasting of the ledge is actually the better way to go when you're taking ledge out. It's not always the most economical, but there, there's a whole engineering study that's done on the ledge, and that's why I was asking if that was, that was done. They do a whole engineering study as to how the, how the ledge is there. Is it just one big hunk of rock?
Yep.
Is it striated? Which elevation, you know, how far down you're going? Which way does it go? Because that all, that all impacts the vibration further on down the line.
Understood.
So they put in, basically, once they determine what kind of ledge that is, they put in sensors, and then they do tests. And they, and they try to, you know, they try to transfer that, that vibration, and try to find out how far it's going to go out. Now, there's two ways. One way of doing it is blasting. The other way of doing is hammering. Now, if you've ever been on a job site or a construction site where they're hammering.
Yeah.
You wish they were blasting, because it's, it's awful. It's awful. So, I mean, I look at this piece, I look at this piece of property and I look at this project as, Millennium Drive has been around for 25 years, actually more than that. And no one's ever had any interest in this piece of property. No one. Why? Because of the ledge.
Yeah, it's hard to picture.
And now, and now, we have someone who's got interested in, you know, buying a piece of property. The first time I met with you guys, the first time, first thing they said was, "It's all rock." And now we've got somebody who's interested in doing this. And it's, and when I said it's a great project, and it's a great developer, and it's a great location, I really meant it, because nothing else has come into this spot. Nothing. And I don't think that an industrial building would go into this spot. But this board, town meeting, and the planning board have, you know, the authority to put all kinds of restrictions on. You may not like them all, but I guarantee you're going to like some of them. And, and, you know, you've been over there a long time, and we want you to stay, but we also need to develop the rest of this property. So that's why I say, great project, great location, great developer. I got to tell you, these guys are top-notch.
Yeah.
They're not fly-by-night people at all. So, so that's, that's why I'm in favor of granting this, knowing that you are going to be more comfortable as the process goes on with this whole, with this whole project.
Yeah, unrealistic, but, but, you know, had I not been here, you know, we run right by that. I mean, I didn't, I didn't hear a whole lot about my company in the first 10, 15 minutes. So.
Yep.
I'm thankful to be here to say it's not that easy. It's, there's some people, I've got 40 people over there. Now, you know, maybe, maybe employees move into that. I mean, there's, there could be advantages, you know, that I'm not thinking of, but we just got to, you have to take our needs into account, and I appreciate you saying that.
Absolutely.
Sure. Mr. Brown, while you are up at the mic, if you don't mind, can you just expound a little bit on, you had mentioned something about the unpredictable nature of sort of residential housing next door. I didn't quite understand what you're concerned with.
Okay. And part of that comment is, I don't know. It's, I sit there on a Sunday, and I watch parents bring their kids up. That's a big driver red situation where they come up, use our driveway, they circle around. That's a more benign use of the property that we see. We've had other people, you know, truckers wanting to spend the night there, which, which I, you know, I never, I'm terribly comfortable with that, but it's really remote right now. So there's, you know, it's, there's some night traffic there that sometimes I wonder about. But just, I'm thinking about, you know, I was a kid, and I know, I know what, you know, they're in that apartment, they're going to, they're being looked for to explore. It'd be great for street hockey up there. It'd be great for a lot of different things. But, and, and I just don't know. If there, if a truck can't get by because there's something, or, you know, we're a service-type operation. We, we turn things around quickly. We're a jewel in that industry, where we're still a family-owned company that, that services everything to us. So if something happens, like we had the water turned off a few weeks ago, and we just got a call, "Yeah, your water's going to be off now. I've got 40 people ready to come in, and we're going to have no water." I can't, you know, it's just a lot that goes into it. And during the construction process, that's short-term, but that concerns me. I don't know how long that's going to go. I mean, you look at the, you look at the property, you can't, you just can't, I saw the renderings of, you just can't fathom that's going to happen, right, right what you're looking at, you know. So that, that's just stuff that I just don't know. I don't know what 233 units are, as a, as a neighbor is going to bring. Right now, we've been blessed. We've been, we've been by ourselves and undeterred. And again, you know, whether it's a traffic problem, or the street's falling apart, or there's, you know, one of my, one of the trucks coming and going from our place runs a kid, you know, I just, it's just stuff I wouldn't, we haven't been faced with. So I will say, as a separate thing, the kids that are taking the train and walking up to the job corps, I don't know how there hasn't been a tragedy there. They are, they are in dark clothes and walking up to that at all hours, and I'm, it scares me. I hope one of the developments of this project is that, you know, there's a better, you know, again, I can't picture if there's going to be sidewalks there or what's going to be happening, but I don't know if anybody's experienced that, but it's, they're coming at all hours to go to that job corps or off the train, and you really have to watch it. So I hope that answered your question.
Okay. Jim, did you want to respond to anything, or?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. And, you know, fortunately, we've been talking prior as well, and I completely understand the concerns. I think our objective is to be a good neighbor, obviously. The, you know, with regard to the blasting, I think most of it's been said. There are people who, you know, this is what they do all day, every day. There's very sensitive blasting that gets done, and we'll take all the precautions with regard to the blasting. With regard to security, or some security issues, you know, I think having 233 units there with just the activity on the street will probably be a benefit from a security standpoint there. You know, some of the other unpredictability, you know, drivers ed and stuff like that, I can't really speak to too much, but, you know, I think.
know, I think, you know, we will have a path directly from our property to the MBTA station. So we won't be creating, you know, pedestrian traffic that would be going around. You know, I don't want to speak specifically, not having all the information in front of me. However, you know, I don't know that I'm not saying there wouldn't be a bus that would come through, but I don't think these developments are typically terrifically heavy on school-age children. You typically have younger children and older children. We do have a pool and other facilities on the physical property. But I think would most of the younger people would stay on on property. And again, we're certainly willing to work with the community.
Is the intention to get this before October town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And how much, based on the timing, how much time does that give us? Does it have to be tonight?
I think it's today.
Yeah, so we're the the these gentlemen are hoping that you will vote on this project tonight. Again, you're you're voting to send your application to the state.
Yeah.
But because of the 90-day turnaround, that's where we meet the rub for town meeting. So in order to get approval from the state before we go to town meeting and don't get yelled at again, that's that's really our that's our timeline. So we would have to submit the application tomorrow, essentially.
Okay. That's unfortunate.
But that that's just a that's just a procedural step. It doesn't oblige you to do anything. It just opens up the door for the state to give you clearance before your October, mid-October town meeting.
Sure. Yeah, understood.
You still you still control the warrant, so.
Yep. On the affordability issue, I understand, I think, what's being said on on the requirement, the zoning requirement. The development can exceed that requirement, right? So the the zoning, the the smart growth zone that's being proposed is is the is the zoning which allows you to build. But what you build on there can exceed the affordability requirement. So if you guys wanted to go to 25%, you could, correct?
Well, if it's written at 20% and the state wants to see the project allowed as of right, then, you know, there there could be a conversation. But I I think that the app to be to be honest about it, I think the applicant could stand on the bylaw and the position of 20%.
The applicant could. I understand that. But you could also exceed it. So if we said, you know, the requirement is 20%, you could build 25%, right? We have that happening with the LIPS might be a good example.
No, it's not a good example, because a lip is a 40B and this is a 40R. And LIPS are not eligible for MBTA inclusion, because it's not a zoning regulation. It's a zoning decision, but it's not a regulation. So it's a different world now.
All right. I'm a little confused on why you guys couldn't do 25% even if the zoning requirement is 20%. I understand there's impacts to the feasibility of the project, but I just want to know, is it possible to exceed the requirement and do 25%?
You're asking a question that nobody's ever asked the MBTA people before.
So for this board member, Grafton has some significant incentive to get that at 25%, because then they all count towards our SHI.
Understood.
Otherwise, they only the affordable units are going to count, and that is a massive difference. So that's why I'm teasing this out as much as I can. Fiona, does the planning board or the planning department have any advice or opinion on this?
The planning board has, we did meet and discuss in using this parcel toward MBTA community compliance, because it was a kind of a perfect fit, knowing the affordability threshold would be at 20%, knowing that anything higher would be a challenge, and the state would probably push push back on that. Again, you know, we are conducting an economic feasibility analysis for for MBTA community zoning for one zone already. And I don't, you know, I don't see an issue with with studying that, but I'm not in terms of how that that would hold up this process. We're trying to, we just closed that our the responses for that today and are evaluating the responses that we received. But in terms of, I I hopefully it wouldn't it wouldn't hold anything up. But it's definitely something that we we could analyze. And the planning board, we did, you know, we did discuss and the planning board did agree that they would like to move forward, seeing it at the current thresholds because it aligned with with 40R. And, you know, MBTA communities is in a development man development mandate. It's just compliance and being able to have the units by right. So we were trying to the board and, you know, myself were trying to basically utilize a path of least resistance and kind of ideal parcels like this one to achieve our compliance. And when we tested the numbers, they did work with the metrics that we have currently.
Sure. Yeah, that no, that all makes sense. And I think, you know, again, what's being proposed far exceeds the MBTA zone requirements, right? Their requirements are, I think, 15 units per acre.
Right.
Talking 20, 25 units per acre, which is a significant improvement, or difference, I guess, depending on how you look at it. It might be an improvement or not. Does anybody on the board have any other thoughts around affordability or anything else?
It's tough with the timeline.
It is very difficult, given the timeline. Is there anybody in the, it's a public hearing?
Mr. Chair, you do have one hand on Zoom.
Come on up, Mr. Robbins, and I'll get to whoever's on Zoom in just a minute.
All righty. David Robbins, 92 Georgia Road, member of the planning board. The planning board has not, as of yet, reviewed this specific proposal. I think we've discussed it in general terms. I have one concern, timeline procedural. And that is, because you've expressed a need to submit this to DHC, excuse, EOHLC tomorrow, the planning board has not had a chance to review the proposed zoning bylaw language, which makes me a little bit uncomfortable. I've looked at it. I spent some time reviewing, looking at it yesterday and today, and I don't see anything in there that I think would be likely to be a problem for the planning board. But eventually, the planning board will hold a public hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw chain. The planning board may have a problem with one or more aspects of the proposed zoning bylaw language. And as I understand it, by the time the board gets to hold its hearing, this will already be in to EOHLC for approval. It's not likely to come back in time for to before the planning board's hearing in the zoning bylaw. So the planning board is going to be in a position of take it or leave it. As I said, I don't, to 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 the extent that I've reviewed the language, I don't see a problem with it. But I do I do see a potential procedural problem here, which, in the worst case, would mean that we cannot pass this at the October town meeting. We may have to wait. And a and this is this comment is more for Mark and Fiona. The workbook that goes along with that has a couple of numerical errors in it, which really should, I don't think they'll affect DH, the EOHLC's review of it, but they really should be corrected. They've got the total land area in Grafton being 6,000 acres and change. We're actually at 14,000 acres and change. The couple of the little nits that I don't want to spend time talking about here, but probably best to get the numbers correct before we send it into the state to maximize our chance of getting a prompt review and approval.
Okay. So just to be
As a side comment, I'll say, I can remember back when we thought biotech was going to be the next big thing. And like Ray pointed out, here we are 25 years later and nothing's happened on this lot.
Sure. So in terms of procedure, if we were to put the application in, and the planning board did a public hearing, reviewed the zoning, proposed zoning changes, and you guys had an issue with it, I understand it'd be sort of take it or leave it, because the language would be what we would need, I think would be what we would need to put on the warrant, if we decided to put it on the warrant.
I think
But if you guys were against it, right, the select board could say, we're not going to authorize this to go on the warrant in in October.
Yeah, I think the take it or leave it aspect is, if the board doesn't want to change the language, the revised language has to go back into EOHLC slash DHCD for further review and approval.
Right, which puts us into
Which would which would delay it.
Right. Okay, understood.
If I might, my experience with DHCD on the dozen or so 40Rs I've done is that it is an evolving document once you submit it. It's not going in absolutely ironclad tonight. Bill will find some things he wants to change in all likelihood. And if the planning board wants to suggest some changes and they're, you know, you're not, you can't blow up the whole document because it's a template. So I think it's likely that the changes could be recommended by the planning board in that 90-day review period and still come out of the wash at the end in time for town meeting.
That would be helpful. I think the board would appreciate understanding that, that and I do personally, that, you know, if 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 we have a chance to work with this, you know, it's not just what we submit tomorrow is cast in the stone. I think with the with the kind of flexibility, Mark, that you suggest, I think that that should give the board more of a level of comfort there.
Outstanding.
I'm I'm more than happy to join Fiona and come to a planning board meeting to facilitate that process.
Fantastic. We had somebody on Zoom?
Yep. Bill, if you unmute, you should be able to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Come on in.
Good evening, Select Board. Bill Yeomanz, 297 Providence Road, South Grafton.
Good evening.
I'm a member of the ZBA, but I'm speaking tonight. Just I have a couple of questions as a as a resident. And I think, Matt, you raised the question, which I had made a note of, the 20% versus the 25%. And the applicant is proposing going forward with the 20% affordability versus the 25%. As I best recall, this started out as a 40B with the 25% requirement. If that's the case, why the change? And the second question I have is, would the units be held in perpetuity, the affordable units? So those are the two questions that I have. Thank you.
So to just address the question of the 40B, I don't think that's relevant anymore. It was actually a, what, friendly 40B? It was a lip originally.
It was a lip.
Right?
Yep.
That's it's no longer a lip. The approach to this development is is a 40R approach. So the the affordability aspect of it really follows the zoning. And as I understand it, we've got to harmonize the zoning, at least somewhat, the zoning in this district with the MBTA zoning in order for it to be included in the required MBTA zone. And the planning board has been organizing to try to include that. And if, well, the state likely would discourage, as a part of this zoning district, a requirement higher than 20%. That's what I understood. Fiona, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, that's correct, Matt.
So I'm not quite sure where that leaves us in terms of, I think, there is a significant benefit to Grafton to have you guys build 25%. But it sounds like we have no way to require that. It's kind of what I'm hearing. Is that is that right, Fiona, or anybody else?
Yeah, that is, I mean, if we we could, you know, the reason why we're having this
this hearing is also we keep it, we'll be submitting with our application a detailed meeting minutes of what was discussed and concerned, the state will evaluate as well. So the state will will likely have some comments to that. So as that that would be in the record, if if we are to submit that application in terms of, you know, enforcing the 25%, I think we can advocate for that. But as long as the the applicant is meeting the minimum 20, 20%, that is what they are technically required to do.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah, I think Fiona just kind of handled my comments last question. But that was that was that was what I wanted to get at, was that the differentiation there, that the we wouldn't be requiring this zoning to use 25%. We'd require the zoning to be 20% in compliance with what the state is recommending, but working with the developer on this particular project to get this project to 25%.
Right. So that would go through planning. And I think what was described earlier is that reasonable conditions would be appropriate. Historically, my experience is affordability requirements that are going to substantially impact the the financial feasibility may not be reasonable. Mr. Robbins?
Bit of a comment on the planning board review process for this. The board has done one, the Eight Pine Street project, the same process that we'll be using here. It's a plan approval process. As Attorney Bobrovsky mentioned, it's equivalent to a site plan review process. A key aspect of that is the board, only with only rare exceptions, the board cannot deny the project. The board, basically, the the process is for the purpose of seeing to it that the project meets all the requirements that are spelled out in the zoning law. So as a particular example of the topic just under discussion, the board, I do not believe would have the power to impose an affordability requirement beyond what the zoning requires. And as is repeatedly noted here, the zoning here has to say 20% affordability in order to qualify for MBTA zoning compliance. There's no question about that. And so the the only question could be, as some of you have been hinting, that maybe the developer could voluntarily or by some side agreement that doesn't outside the scope of the planning board, a developer could, if they so chose, propose a project with more than 20%, more than the minimum. But that's there's there's nothing, at least nothing on the planning side of this that would allow us to require that.
Yep. Mrs. Chairman, quick question. So your process, Fiona's process, are you feeling confident and comfortable that you'll have the time and space to do that, given the requirements that we have to that we'll be putting on the table if we vote to move this forward for the application?
Yeah, I mean, well, there's there's two parts of the process you may be referring to. One is just the process of getting this through to approval, to to put the zoning in place, which will then allow the process of approving the development to happen. And you know, in in both cases, I think, as long as we have enough, it's a reasonable opportunity for the board to review in detail the proposed zoning and approve that in time for town meeting, I think we can make that work. After that, it's just a usual planning board review and approval process for the project.
That's the part I'm referring to. So both of them matter.
Yeah. And, you know, our experience with the plan approval process with Eight Pine Street, which is the same 40R district we're now talking about, same process, it was not a difficult process.
There's a roadmap. You've been on that road before.
The procedures are all, you know, they're very well spelled out. The requirements are spelled out. We know how that works. Fiona wasn't the planner to sort of shepherd this thing through for the Pine Street project, but it's pretty much all spelled out between our zoning bylaw and the 40R regulations, which dictate a lot of the process as well. So, yeah, it's a known quantity.
Fiona, you agree, right?
Yes. Thank you, Dave.
Blake?
You have one hand on Zoom, Mr. Yeomanz again.
Oh, come on in, Mr. Yeomanz. I have three hands on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question of perpetuity of the affordable units.
Just that one wasn't answered when he asked first.
I would believe, I'll defer to Mark, but I would believe that they would be in
I would believe, I'll defer to Mark, but I would believe that they would be in perpetuity, but I'm not certain. If not, if not, we-
I, I think every other one I've done is in perpetuity, but I would want to reserve my right to talk to Bill and my client about this. I, I, I think you're looking at a very likely prospect of that.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Yeomanz?
Just speaking from past experience in the planning board, I think the board would expect perpetuity.
Sure, yeah, makes sense.
That's what I would anticipate as well.
It's, Ms. Ethier, do you have a question on this?
Not a question, just a comment. Nicole Ethier, 19 Patricia Drive. I'm a local realtor in town, and I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, the state of Massachusetts has been in a housing crisis for a long time, along with affordability crisis as well. One, one of the reasons why the M B T A community's requirement was put in place. So I think from what I see, this looks like a great opportunity for Grafton. It looks like a nice development, and I think it's a great opportunity and way for people to get into our community, renting and then eventually, you know, buying a home and becoming a bigger part of our community.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Just one last question from me, and that is to the applicant. Would you guys be open to some continued discussion about that affordability as built threshold? Not the requirement in the zoning, but what you guys would actually be bringing before planning board?
I, I've been texting my dear friend and M B T A circuit writer Judy Barrett, Fiona's former boss, during the course of the conversation about this topic. And I can tell you that, you know, this is, I'm reading from Judy's response to my question. "The town can provide incentives for more than 20, but can't require it. The absolute cap is 20, and only if an economic feasibility shows it won't impede the development." That's at 20. So I asked whether or not it was possible for the bylaw to say 20, but the town to exact another 5%. And Judy reiterated that the applicant could say no. And since that would come at a time when the town has likely cashed the check, you're in, you're in no man's land. That, that, your questions are exploring the edge of the known world, so.
No, understood. And I think that's what Mr. Jefferson was talking about with, you know, the, the incentive process. So I, I take that to mean that you'd be open to the discussion about some incentives and pursuing that, that path, I suppose, towards some additional affordability, even if we can't require it. It is desirable.
Well, there's nothing wrong with a good discussion.
And I'll-
All right, I won't hang my hat on that, is what I'm hearing.
And I will point out as well, right, part of the, the shift from the friendly 40B to the lip was the incentive for the town of the million-plus dollars for the general fund, as well as, you know, being a pioneer in the M B T A and the 40R. So I just wanted to reiterate those points as well.
Makes sense to me. How's it, Ms. Brown?
Carrie Brown, and I'm married to Jim. We're the co-owners of Primary Colors. Just a question about the sale of the land. So full disclosure, my mom owns the land, and she's selling to you guys. But tonight, when I heard that it increased the units, I don't think that we understood that before. We thought it was for the retaining wall, as Jim had pointed out. So I'm just, you know, it's been, what, a year and a half and still hasn't gone through, doesn't have to go through, wondering what the, what the impact is unit-wise. If she doesn't sell it, how does that, because it's 233 right now. So what would it eventual, you know, what would it be if she didn't sell it? Because obviously, I think you kind of want the land for more units, it sounds like. At least that's what the lawyer said tonight.
All right, I don't think that that, so the, the area, the additional land was not for more units. The additional land allows for some additional parking.
Parking, right.
And it allows us to grade the site more favorably, but it doesn't add units.
To your acreage, right?
It adds the acreage. I think Mark was-
Which then therefore impacts, does not impact the size?
It'll change the density of the calculation.
Right, so, so you're getting more units with that extra land, right?
Not in the way that this-
Just putting them in a better location.
I just, I, that's just, you know, I just want to understand.
We did not increase the, the unit count because of the additional land.
Okay, so it's parking closer to us then, it sounds like.
There's some parking, but it's, there's really a land. I can show you the plan.
Yeah, I'd love to see it, just, you know, for, okay, thanks.
All right, so we've been at this a little bit over an hour.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
One more hand on Zoom.
All right, take one more person on Zoom. Come on in.
It's Bill again.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me.
Of course.
One last question. Are the percentages that exist on a 40B for one, two, and three bedrooms, are they the same with the 40R?
A 40B requires a 10% contribution of three-bedroom units. I, I believe Bill can tell you the exact position of the three-bedroom units here in the 40R.
Yeah, in the 40R, they were reduced to 5%. So instead of having, it's approximately 5%. And the, the final design isn't complete yet, but we reduced it to approximately 5%, which is about 12 or 13 three-bedroom units instead of 23.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I should add that there, there is no regulation or policy at D H C D about the number of three-bedroom units in a 40R. They're not required like they are in a 40B.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second any discussion. All those in favor by roll call, Mr. Jefferson.
Jefferson, aye.
Mr. Meath?
Meath, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Austin, aye?
Foley, aye.
The motion carries. Public hearing is closed?
Go to the motion for consideration. All right, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to submit this application to modify the North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District, which includes a zoning amendment to establish a new Sub District B at the M B T A station to the Executive Office of House and Livable Communities under Chapter 40R for its preliminary determination of eligibility under 760 C M R 59 dot 05 parentheses 2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just say, I was trying to explore tonight the potential for us to get to 25%. For me, that's not the goal here. I guess taking into account that we can have some, some additional discussions, and we've got a planning process and a town meeting, and there's a lot of additional steps to go through. I'm in strong support of this. You know, Grafton and all Massachusetts needs housing, and I think this is a, this is a good way to do it. This has been a, a parcel that's been vacant for, for some time. And, you know, I, I think it's, would be good for this board to support some development in there. There are some, some one-time money incentives from the state, which I think, I, I don't typically give those a whole lot of weight because you spend the money and then it's gone.
Yeah, already spent.
Yeah, I'm sure you've spent it five times already. But, 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 you know, a million dollars is nothing to sneeze at. Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah, I'd, I'd echo that sentiment. It would be great if it checked off three boxes and that we could, you know, get that 25% up to, you know, increase our, our overall affordability. But as it currently stands, you know, I, I'm in the same camp that it's a, it's a parcel that's long sat dormant that we can finally do something with, and it does count towards our M B T A zoning. So, you know, I'll, I'll take the two out of three now and, and see if we can work on that third one.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Alamo?
It does seem like a good location for this kind of a project, hoping that we do take in the concerns of the Abutter. They seem very legitimate, so as much as possible.
Any other comments? Bearing none, by roll call, Mr. Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Meath, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Austin, aye?
Foley, aye.
All right, the motion carries.
All right, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to continue the public hearing on, to July 25th, 2023, regarding the wine and malt beverage license held by the Grafton Flea Market.
I have a motion. Moving on.
What? Oh, sorry. Oh, wait.
It's already been done.
No, I think they were just going to wrap up.
Took me by surprise, yeah.
We did that last one.
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming who came to the public hearing. We appreciate you guys coming in and doing the presentation. And I guess, I'm not sure who will be in touch, but in terms of doing the actual submission, but.
Yeah, Fiona's on that. Go ahead, Fiona.
Yes, that, that will be me, Matt.
Okay, great.
We'll coordinate with Amber to get the minutes from this meeting.
Thank you so much for coming in. We look forward to continuing working with you.
Thanks again to everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I still have a motion.
Yeah, you do. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on continuing the hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Meath, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Austin, aye?
Foley, aye.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Meath?
Can we take item 4A out of the rotation and do it now, please?
I'd be in full support of that.
Good.
All right, we're going to take next the proclamation for Marsha Platt.
Okay.
I believe Ms. Foley had a few things to say.
Yeah, but do I first have to say something up here?
You might want to invite this. Yeah.
Ms. Platt, do you want to come up? You're our guest of honor.
I have never met you, Mr. Austin.
Well, it's a pleasure. It's a real pleasure.
And I don't think we've ever met, have we? I'm afraid right now.
You're welcome. Have a seat, Ms. Platt. Thanks, Ray.
We moved it up, I moved it up because people are starting to cut off.
I know, thank you. Okay, so the Grafton Select Board. "Be it hereby known to all that the Grafton Select Board offers its sincerest respect and gratitude to Marsha Platt. In recognition of her dedicated service to the town of Grafton, may her outstanding commitment be an inspiration to our community." And it's signed by the five select board members. And I just wanted to say a couple of words. Tried to research a little bit about all that Marsha has done for our, our community. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. For Worcester, for parts of the state. So just wanted to kind of highlight a few things. I won't keep anyone any longer than, than we need to be. But in her 54 years of, or thereabouts, of living in Grafton, she certainly made quite the impact here in our town. And it's been my personal pleasure to get to know you and try to emulate you in maybe some small manner. And I'll just kind of go back to when she first, or early, when you were, when you moved here and you had your children, you created the SAVE, I believe it was called, School Aid Volunteers for Education. And part of what you did, or your group did, in addition to other things at the, the new elementary school on North Street, was to not only create, but to fully staff the library at the time. In 1972, you successfully ran and won a seat on the school board or school committee. I don't know the extent of your time on that committee, but I can only imagine that you made some, some serious stents in, in what we needed at the time. Obviously, you've been a long-term member of the League of Women Voters. And during your tenure on the league, you were part of the Financing Government Study, which led to the campaign for Proposition 200, 2 and 1/2 in 1980. I believe you were a part of that. You ran for the Grafton's Board of Assessors, I'm sorry. And you were on that board for potentially more than 18 years. I know Tammy's here, and she might be able to speak more to the, your role on the assessors. You became a full-time assessor for the town. And then Grafton, at the time, along with Southborough, we were the first communities to adopt the state organized mass appraisal system under your leadership. Your work identifying ownership of open wetlands, in addition to many other things, resulted in the town being able to claim ownership of the vast expanse at the heart of Misco Brook. Marsha and others also placed a charter question on our warrant at the time, which resulted in us having a town administrator for the first, first time back then. Was Dan? Morgada, probably, yeah. I think I was here for that. In 1992, she ran, won, and served representing the Ninth Worcester, Worcester District in the Massa, Massachusetts House of Representatives. And she was the 101st female to be a female, or to be a state rep, a female state rep. And just additionally, registered voters, TIF member, election worker for a long time, Institutional Biosafety Committee member. And then lastly, you joined the Fogey Board, I believe in 2016, and became the president probably shortly thereafter. And from what I understand, you essentially breathed life into that, that, the Fogey at the time, at a time when it was dying. And you made it into the force that it is now, supporting the, the Grafton Senior Center. And to quote the current president, John Cameron, "If you're just glad Fogey is around, thank Marsha." So Marsha has been, you know, tenacious, dedicated, an inspiration, and you've certainly set the, the bar high for all of us, and I thank you.
Thanks. Tammy, did you have a couple of comments?
Um, yes. I'm sorry I couldn't be there, Marsha. I just wanted to thank you for all that you've done over the years. You have been a mentor, not just to me, but to many of my predecessors. It has truly been an honor and a pleasure working with you for the 18 years that I have had the opportunity to work with you in the Assessors' Office. You have brought a wealth of knowledge to the table that we have not seen before, and your presence will be truly, truly missed in the Assessors' Office.
Thank you, Mr. Alamo.
Just one question. When did you sleep throughout all this time? And also a comment. I had talked a little bit about commitment to service when I first started talking about doing this job or, or running for this position. And I didn't realize that it was that much. I mean, that's a lot of service. You set an amazing example. Thank you so much. It's an honor to meet you.
Yeah, I'll echo those sentiments. You know, you're a real inspiration. You know, it's clear that you're somebody who sees something that needs to be done and actually does it. That's a, that's a real credit to anybody who's able to do that in so many different ways over such a long period of time. So thank you so much for all of your service and, and what you've contributed to our community. How can follow that? Can we take like a two-minute break?
All right, just take a two-minute re-
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Paul Letourneau to the Accessibility Advisory Commission. Do I need to repeat that?
Sorry, you can sit down or stand up.
Okay. Here I am. I'm open to any kind of questions.
Oh, you're gonna get them, trust me.
Oh, good. I'll give you a little my history. I was born in Worcester, but I was raised in Grafton. We moved here in 1953, when I was about that old. And, and I've lived here ever since, except I had a time, six years in the military, Air Force, stationed in Japan and at Andrews Air Force Base. Now, that was exciting because President Kennedy was there, so was Air Force One. And I was stationed there when he was assassinated. I was also stationed there when the Cuban Missile Crisis occurred. That was frightening. But at the same time, when you were an 18-year-old kid, how exciting! Yeah, so. And after that, I had trouble finding work. I didn't know what to do. Eventually, I went to school to become a hairdresser. And then I got involved in community theater, which I've done since 1965. I've probably directed 30 musicals and straight shows, and have acted and sung in probably 50. So I've had a good life. Things go on, and the interesting thing about this Advisory Committee on Accessibility is important to me because I live in a community of older people. And many of them have difficulty with accessibility in a way which is invisible. Some of them, it's because their perception is off, and they don't see things the way they should, or the way the rest of us do. Some of them, their accessibility problems are based on emotional upset. We have a woman who lives in my building. She's somewhat overweight. She's in a wheelchair or a walker. She smokes. She has emphysema. You can't change that in a person. All you can do is try to make her life a little easier. Now, when she goes out, she has to step off a small incline onto the dirt. It's dirt now because so many people walking out there, we use the backyard. It is now dirt, which then becomes mud, which then becomes tracked in their people's apartments. Whereas if there was a patio-type pad that was there, she could walk in that, and the other tenants could also, and wouldn't bring dirt and stuff into their apartments. But those are the kind of things I, I'm interested in. And also, having had a mental illness and suffered from it, take medication, I know how hard it is for some of our residents who suffer occasional outbursts. One lady in mind, she's a sweetheart, but if she's had a few, she's the murder. And she calls me, because I was a hairdresser, I cut her hair. I have to be careful. Because when she calls and she sounds a little and you say, "Oh, could we put it off until Friday?" And she'll say, "Okay, I'll call you Friday." And on Friday, she doesn't call, which means she forgot, or she's still having a fuse.
Mr. Chairman, I think the wheels are falling off.
Mr. Letourneau, with great respect.
The wheels are falling off the bus here.
We have a very long agenda.
I know.
And sorry, Mr. Chair, if I might, because I think I preempted here. I move the board vote to appoint Paul Letourneau to the Accessibility Advisory Commission.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
We haven't voted yet.
All right, have a good night.
No, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, I don't, hang on.
All those in favor, Mr. Jefferson.
Aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Okay.
Meade.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye.
Can I hit the road?
Foley, aye.
Hey!
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thanks for sitting through this whole meeting so far.
I found it fascinating. The one question I liked that he asked, Mr.
Alamo.
Alamo?
Yes.
Was what sort of supportive commercial enterprises would be included in the plan? Because if you have that many people living in that smaller space, they gotta have someplace to get groceries that's fairly close, maybe entertainment that's fairly close, maybe fast food that's fairly close, none of which is available.
Thank you, Mr. Letourneau. I have one fan. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Train. Okay, next up, we have affordable housing. Nicole Ethier, come on in.
Nicole Ethier, I currently sit on the Economic Development Commission with Ray. I'm a local Realtor in town. This is my second career. And I was just newly appointed just a couple of months ago to state political coordinator for Dave Meridian. So that's through our Realtor Association. I basically become his boots on the ground for any, like, housing-related issues. And back in June, I stayed at the State House advocating for different things like what we were just talking about, housing production, affordability, et cetera. So this is, you know, something that's part of my new career, something I'm passionate about. And I'm definitely passionate about Grafton as a community and, you know, helping young families be able to come into this community and live and grow and work as well.
Outstanding. Well, I wish you great success in your new career. Any questions?
Thank you.
If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Nicole Ethier to Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Jefferson.
Jefferson, aye.
Meade, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye?
Foley, aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Cultural Council with Carrie Phelan Lee. Come on in.
Thank you. Yep, my name is Carrie. I'm originally from PVD and attended all my school here in Massachusetts. But I actually just moved to Grafton, to North Main Street, with my wife and dog on Memorial Day weekend. And it's been a privilege to just, yeah, live in this town just a little last few months. Thank you. Yeah, but since moving here, I've had the privilege of attending the Grafton Housing Meeting, Master Plan Workshop, and even our Fourth of July Parade and local farmers markets. What I've learned from, from this little snapshot of events is Grafton has a lot to offer and many people who care about each other and the town as a whole. On top of that, there are rich pockets of diversity throughout the town that have become very obvious to me in my short time here. Hoping to be involved in building upon that culture of Grafton and better understanding what the community cares about and where we would like to go. I know the council, our Cultural Council supports the distribution of grants from the state and setting the yearly funding priorities. I'd like to be part of this and think my background of community work and within this, within global health at Mass General would make me a strong candidate for this committee. Appreciate your time.
Wow, that was amazing. Well done.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think I saw your dog on the parade. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I pulled over. Andy was feeding candy and I was petting dogs.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Carrie Phelan Lee to the Cultural Council.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Jefferson.
Meade.
Briefly, I was gonna throw in discussion. I had the pleasure of meeting Carrie and her wife at the Housing Production Plan Meeting, was super impressed at coming out to something like that for the short time that they've been in town. And very excited with her past experience and, and her willingness to serve. So thank you for stepping up.
Fantastic. Fiona.
I would also just like to personally attest to Carrie's character. She is a wonderful person as her wife. She has been super involved in all things planning, the Housing Production Plan Workshop, as Andy mentioned, as well as our master plan efforts and our Master Plan Workshop, as well as our Whitney Park effort. So can't, can't endorse her enough.
Thank you, Fiona.
Thank you, Fiona.
Endorsement. Love it. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, Mr. Jefferson.
Jefferson, aye.
Meade, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye.
Foley, aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, we have Mr. Brown. Come on up.
Here, here.
Wherever you like.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening. We have you up for the Historical Commission. Maybe just give us a quick rundown on why you're interested and, and your background.
I'm interested because I'm very interested in the history of Grafton and also helping out. There's definitely a lot more for me to learn, and I think I can learn by getting onto these boards. My history is that I was on the Cultural Council for a couple of years. At 24, I was the youngest member. And I'd just love to help the town out in any way I can.
Outstanding. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Kevin Brown to the Historical Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Jefferson.
Jefferson, aye.
Meade, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye.
Foley, aye.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the TA and Fire Chief appointments. First up is the Board of Sewer Commissioners, Bob Egan.
I don't believe Bob is, is here.
Okay.
My appointment, we don't customarily bring them in.
Yep.
But if you recall, Bob is a 32-year member of the Fire Department that had just retired and we did a proclamation for him.
Yep. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Robert Egan to the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring none. All those in favor, Mr. Jefferson.
Jefferson, aye.
Meade, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye.
Foley, aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have two regular firefighters, Alex Dionne and Bruno Camargo.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointments of Alex Dionne and Bruno Carmagio to the position of regular firefighter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Jefferson.
Jefferson, aye.
Meade, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye.
Foley, aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we're on item 4B, considering endorsing the Building Training and Assessment Centers program by WPI. Evan, did you wanna talk us through that, or?
This is not, Mr. Chair.
It's me.
I mean, I, I've got this, this letter here. It's not on WPI.
No, it's you endorsing the project and sending it. So it's the town of Grafton saying, yes, we support this, the creation of, sorry, this Assessment Center, which focuses on public building energy assessment and giving recommendation as well as guidance on how to become more energy efficient. So it's, it's really just us saying, yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Mr. Jefferson.
Yeah, in, in reading through this, I was curious. It seemed like it was buildings of 50,000 square feet or less?
Yep, that's what I read, too.
How many, how many of our municipal buildings fit that requirement?
All except the Municipal Center and the DPW, I believe.
Thank you.
And not counting school buildings. I, I, yeah, I don't know the square footage of every school building in, in Grafton, to be honest with you. So I think the answer is many, but not all. Yep, some. More than one, less than 100.
So the way that I read this, it seemed like a university-sponsored sort of mass save program?
Yep.
Where they'd come in for no cost and do energy audits and provide recommendations to potentially unlock some state grants. That's sort of the 30 second from what I read.
Correct. Yep.
So I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think it makes sense. There's no cost to Grafton. Obviously, we'd be one of many communities. And, you know, any opportunity that we have to unlock state money and not burden the taxpayers, I'm in favor of, so. And any other comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to endorse the New England Building Training and Assessment Center proposal led by Worcester Polytechnic Institute and authorize the chair to sign the letter to the U.S. Department of Energy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just chime in. I think, Andy, you're correct when I thought about this. It's probably not a ton of buildings, but we get a couple, and, yeah, yeah.
All right, any other comments? Barring none, Mr. Jefferson.
Jefferson, aye.
Meade.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye.
Foley, aye.
Outstanding. Next, we have the Complete Streets Policy.
You missed one.
I did.
C.
Oh, IAGB. Yep, sorry. Do we have anybody here to represent the IAGB?
Yes, this is Shali Gade. I'm the IAGB president, and I will be representing IAGB.
Vashali, it's a pleasure to have you at our meeting. Yeah, if you want to just give us the background, I've been to quite a few of your celebrations up on the, at the Municipal Center, but, but maybe you can just walk us through for the public benefit.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Zilbo, for having us here, and thank you for attending the past events. We have had, you know, wonderful India commemoration celebrations at the Grafton Town. This is the fourth year that we are making this request. And it just gives, it's a joyous occasion for all the Indian Americans residing in the Grafton, not only just the town of Grafton, but we also extend this invitation to the surrounding towns. And it's, again, the joyous occasion for people And it's again, the joyous occasion for people to celebrate the country that they came from, the culture that they brought here and have that immersive experience, not only for Indian Americans, but also the other town members and town residents so that they can enjoy and, you know, appreciate the culture that has been, you know, that gets shared in the town, at the town common. We have had this fortune to celebrate the India's Independence Day at the other towns across the New England area. We have, we do actually this celebration in about 12 to 15 towns and also in New Hampshire and Connecticut. And the response we get is just amazing. People really appreciate. And people also, you know, feel the inclusivity and appreciate the occasion to showcase the diversity. The celebration, you know, usually lasts about 15 minutes to 45 minutes, depending upon who is coming and who is talking and how many cultural performances that the town members want to, you know, put together. But it doesn't go beyond that. And mostly it is a, you know, a joy celebration. That is what we have noticed across other towns. So appreciate the opportunity for, you know, letting us come forward and put this request on the, on your agenda and let me know if you have any questions.
Sounds good. Chairman, Mr. Almo?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the cooperative and collaborative and inclusive nature with which that you're presenting this whole thing and I hope I can make it. I really do.
Any other comments? I just wanted to say, you know, this is, the Indian culture does continue to come into Grafton to be shared. One of my first, I think it was my first attendance at that celebration, I was made aware that there are over 350 Indian families residing in Grafton, which is just, it's, it surprised me, but it was a pleasant surprise. And, you know, I think I've been to each of those celebrations since it started. And I would recommend that anybody in town come out, once we set the date on that. It really is, it's a quick ceremony, but it's an important one to recognize an important constituents in town and an important culture that's increasingly a big part of this town's fabric. So I encourage people to come up for that. Any other questions? No, I think we've got three dates. Mr. Jefferson?
That was, that was where I was heading with that. I believe they proposed three dates and just wondering if they had a preference as to which one we targeted.
Yep.
Fifth or sixth, which is the Saturday or Sunday, fifth is the Saturday and sixth is a Sunday. If you have any, actually, sixth would be better if you have that available. If not, we can go to the following weekend.
That would be Sunday, is it?
Yeah, sixth would be a Sunday.
Okay, so my only concern is we typically do it at the Municipal Center. Where are we going to be with the paving at that point?
Well, the, the original dates submitted were the 12th or 13th.
Which is perfectly fine. We can, we can work with 12 too, no problem.
Personally, I would, I would like to see it at least at the 12th, only because we're, the whole municipal parking lot is torn up right now. And while I'm relatively certain that we will be done well in advance of that, I just would hate to impact your celebration with us not being able to meet that timeline.
Okay. So I'm hearing that you guys are okay with the 12th? That's the Saturday?
We are. Yes, we are certainly.
Okay, and I believe the timeframe starts at 9:00 AM. Do you have a preference on start time?
If, if it can be pushed to 10:00 AM, if that's okay, we'll log that. If not, again, 9:00 is fine.
It's your celebration. I think we could accommodate 10.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so the 12th, 10:00 AM at the Municipal Center.
Right. And, and if someone could just reach out to the town administrator's office and let us know what you might need for infrastructure. I know one year you, you wanted electricity out there, so we were able to get power out there. But if you could just reach back out to our office and let us know what, what you need, we'll make sure that you have it on that date.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Complete Streets.
Yes, that is me. Hi, everyone. Hello, Chair and members of the board. Thank you for, for having me again for hopefully a much shorter agenda item. I am not able to share my screen to display the
Will can do it.
Complete Streets policy. Oh, thank you.
I told you. Well, let's see about that.
All righty, thank you, William. So, yeah, so this basically, this is our Complete Streets policy, which was kind of the first step for Grafton to become a complete streets community. This was implemented back in 2021. We have been conversing with our MS4 consulting team, VHB, and they made some recommendations. They have done a review of our zoning, as well as our subdivision rules and regs and our Complete Streets policy to bring it basically up to speed with current practices and align, you know, Complete Streets with, with MS4 requirements. So the only change is the, yeah, William, if you keep scrolling a little more, I think I highlighted. Yes, so under the best practices section, we added as a bullet point here regarding infiltration practices and implementing a low-impact development elements to our best practices for Complete Streets. So including elements listed here, including but not limited to the elements listed here, rain gardens, curb extensions, plantar gardens, et cetera. So this is a relatively small change, but an important one nonetheless, as Grafton continues to see, you know, increasing imperfect surface and obviously with the Complete Streets. And when we get to the, the point where we'll be starting applying for projects, it is wise to be thinking ahead and merging these efforts and trying to create minimal impacts on flooding and, you know, damages from stormwater. So this was the only change that I had. Happy to answer any questions from the board on this.
Any questions?
No, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley?
I move the board vote to approve the revision of the Complete Streets policy as presented and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Jefferson?
I just wanted to flag quick, I'd like to follow up with Fiona on this briefly. I found a few typos throughout the course of the, throughout the course of the policy. Nothing substantive, but, you know, or that changes any meaning, just straight typos. I just wanted to call that out.
Okay. I think sort of clerical things are allowed.
Thanks, Andy. I will address those when we submit the book before signing. Yeah, absolutely.
So I have a motion and a second. Mr. Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Off to nigh?
Foley, aye.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Master Plan Working Group Charge.
Right, this is me again. All righty, so we have drafted a charge for our Master Plan Working Group, which is a significant group of folks, a good, a good amount of folks. We now, we have 27 official, I'm sorry, 24 official members, three pending appointment. They just missed the cutoff date. So we just, we crafted this charge based on research that I had done of charges in other communities, as well as the tasks that were outlined in the RFP response from the awarding, I'm sorry, the entity that we awarded to, which CMRPC. So I basically aligned the charge with what the text in, in that, as well as, you know, aligning with the standardized language, the state. It's four sections here. Basically, the working group will meet monthly with town staff and the consulting team, which can, will consist of CMRPC staff, project manager, community engagement specialist, and an additional project assistant. The, before I delve into the, the other sections, I did want to make a note that we did bring this to the draft, to the Master Plan Working Group meeting, first meeting last night, and nobody had any significant, well, actually, any thoughts or additions that they wanted to implement. Everybody on the working group seemed very comfortable with this text. With that being said, I'll continue on with the duties I've listed here. So the working group will review and approve drafts of the master plan deliverables that will be produced by CMRPC per their contract with us and also provide recommendations, comments, changes, et cetera. Any, you know, we, the goal is to have a, you know, we have a pretty talented group of folks with a variety of specializations, planners, developers, engineers, et cetera. So the goal is to have, you know, members of the working group review for accuracy and act in an advisory capacity to the consulting team throughout this process, which will take, which is scheduled to go from hopefully now until the final plan is drafted. Section three, the working group will assist with strategy articulation, which is essentially the vision, goals, objectives, and ultimate action slash implementation items of the plan. So this will be a really critical role for the Master Plan Working Group to really assess what, you know, how, the vision of the town, how we should be proceeding with implementing this plan and what's kind of realistic in terms of on-the-ground action items. I don't know if anybody on the board is familiar with the 2001 plan, but it is lengthy. It's a great master plan, but it's quite long with a lot of action items. So we're really hoping to direct, our focus is here with this talented group of folks to get us, you know, in a, in a better, you know, more concise and more implementable direction. And lastly, the working group, this is kind of more standardized language, but the Master Plan Working Group will help with the community engagement outreach, advertising, et cetera, and engagement campaigns for the master plan, including our upcoming workshop. We did just have one, but we'll, we have another one. We'll be doing stakeholder interviews and we'll be doing a variety of other engagement tasks, which we will rely on the working group to help us get the word out and, yeah, yeah, and then help staff and learn their expertise to that as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley?
I move the board vote to approve and sign the Master Plan Working Group Charge as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Jefferson?
As this group has grown, do we have any concern going forward that we're going to be able to hit this, this high quorum number that we have?
Yes. No, I'm joking. We do have, you know, obviously, the quorum has always been kind of something in the, in the back of our minds, but we do have a really, I can't underscore this enough, wonderful dedicated group of folks who are committed to this process and are committed to showing up. We had great attendance at our first meeting and I will be taking it upon myself to make sure that we're getting advanced notice. And if we, if anyone cannot make it for whatever reason, and we will just merge our, you know, merge tasks. If, you know, we were slated to have something addressed at the October meeting, for example, and if we can't get a quorum, then obviously we'll, we'll adjust and, and we will, you know, we'll, we'll be able to, to address that and we'll be able to work with the working group and make sure that we're getting everybody brought up to, to speed, yes. But it, it is definitely, it definitely was a concern of ours. But, you know, the first master plan, the 2001 plan, had a really extensive group of folks that were involved. We really do want to keep that momentum going. Folks in Grafton really should be able to have an opportunity to make their, their voices heard and we really want to allow them the opportunity to do so. So, yes, that's answering, Andy, yes, it is a little bit of a concern, but nothing that we in the planning department or the board think that would, would be, nothing we can't manage.
Mr. Chair, if I might, all of our meetings are via Zoom, so it makes it a lot easier for folks to be able to come. They're just once a month. And I think maybe last night, were there, were we short four people or thereabouts?
Yes, right, right, exactly.
Okay, any other comments, questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I already did that.
Already have it. All right, well, we're in discussions. Mr. Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Off to nigh?
Foley, aye.
All right, motion carries.
Don't worry, Matt, I keep track.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Fiona, thank you so much. I think you've been in at least half of our agenda items.
I know.
So, thanks, thanks so much for all of your input tonight. We, we appreciate it.
Thank you all. No, this is great conversations and I appreciate always getting the opportunity to talk to you all and looking forward to working on, working on these efforts with the select board and planning board and all the other folks. So, all righty, thank you so much. Have a wonderful night.
Thanks, have a good night. Okay, next up, we have trustees and soldiers and trustees of soldiers and sailors memorials charge.
Yep, so we are bringing this back to the board. We talked about it a couple of weeks ago. In the interim, I have been in contact with Justin Stone, who's the chair of the committee, and Bob Datoma, who's very active on it. They reviewed the charge, they provided some input, and we are now at a place where we think that it adequately captures what the committee is going to be doing.
All right, thank you for the work. Appreciate that. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley?
I move the board vote to approve and sign the Trustees of Soldiers and Sailors Memorials Charge as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Jefferson, do you have any discussion you'd like to engage in?
No discussion right now. Jefferson, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
What about the rest of us? Foley, aye.
All right, the motion carries. Let's see, next we have select board reports.
I was at the Master Plan Working Group meeting last night and it was just our initial meeting, introducing people, getting a sense of what it might look like. And we came up with, or the charge was presented to us and we had an opportunity for feedback. That's all I have.
Outstanding. Thank you for that. Any other reports?
Nothing for me. I went to the opening night on Friday, Holden Farms. It was totally manageable. A lot of people went. It felt great to be a part of it. You could see a lot of people in the town come over to support it and participate. It was just really nice, yeah, and totally manageable.
Outstanding. Good to hear. All right, next up, we have the TA report.
Yep, I'm gonna pare this down just a little bit.
Okay.
Enhance. All right, so Regional Dispatch, the only thing we are waiting, we're gonna have a kickoff meeting with the 911 Department and that'll be the town administrators and manager, well, there's only two of us. So myself and Kristi Williams from Westboro, as well as the four chiefs. They'll give us kind of our marching orders and then we'll be off and running. So excited about that. Our treasurer collector has resigned effective August 4th. So we will be posting that position. And just a reminder that you have a, we should get the select board exit interview completed. So you can reach directly out to Madeline. I don't know if you want to go through either Krista or Amber to do that.
Okay. So I'm just unclear on that. I know we talked about the policy and, and then we, I brought it up here again, a different time where it wasn't select board. And I did pull it up and look at it. I don't have it tonight, but did it not include also like a different department head or, no?
No, the
Again, but I need to.
It's, it's, I had brought this to the select board and this is for when we have department heads that are exiting.
Right.
I probably should not be the person doing the exit interview.
Of course.
Because they're my direct report. So to get kind of that, that outside look at why people might choose to move on.
I totally understand the, yeah, what it's worth. Never mind, I'll find the policy. Last time we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, it was indicated that it wasn't something that we were doing.
Nope, it was that you're, the board is notified when there's a resignation. It's incumbent on whoever from the board is going to do it to reach out to the, the person and do the exit interview.
Right, so the question is, is anybody interested in doing that?
I'll do it.
Emery's interested. Anybody else? Happy to have you do that. That sounds good. So you can, yeah, just take that offline and coordinate that.
Do you want me to, would it be helpful to email Madeline and you and introduce you via email?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, good. And then when that has been done, where does the output of the exit interview go?
Well, it would go to all of you for review and then ultimately into the personnel file. So.
But never to, never to a meeting.
Right, and it'll be, it would be shared with me as well so that I can adjust if necessary.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, I think some of that is exit interview driven, right? So if the exit interview is the town administrator yells at me every day and is abusive, then you're not going to bring that to me. That's going to result in a different
Probably won't get that from this person, right?
No, probably not from Madeline, but, well, probably not from anybody, but just to be clear. But, you know, Madeline and I go back pretty far, so.
Okay.
I believe this particular shift is due to family obligation and the length of the commute. So she's going to be the treasurer collector of Brimfield, which cuts the commute from an hour down to So, she's going to be the treasurer collector of Brimfield, which cuts the commute from an hour down to a little less than 20 minutes.
Yep.
So.
So, Amber, it sounds like we are going to just rely on your discretion to, and judgment in terms of how to, who to, who to distribute and how to manage that, that output. Very good.
Okay, moving on, just real quick. Everybody in this room knows, obviously, but I just wanted to say this again at the Select Board meeting. We are currently renovating the parking lot, so we have done all the milling and the compaction of the substrate. We're doing some final drainage stuff and sloping throughout the rest of the week. Paving starts on Monday. And then we will have two to three weeks where there are no lines as the lot cures, and then we will line it.
Looks like they already started the striping, huh?
Sure does. If, if it goes anything like it's been going, I can't wait to see folks visiting the Municipal Center without lines. It's been a, it's been a couple of days. So, all I would say is that if you are a resident and you're interested in meeting with anyone at the Municipal Center, whether that's to pay a bill or elsewise, or, or otherwise, just give a call to the office first, and they are happy to meet you in a safe spot, whether that's down at GCTV, down at the PD. We've been doing that pretty consistently. We've even had some meetings out on the lawn over there. So, happy to help, but just be mindful of the construction equipment. I don't want to see anyone get hurt, so. That's all we've got.
Sounds good. All right, we have no, well, we, next up is Correspondent. Does anybody have anything that they would like to address? Going once, twice?
Nope.
All right.
Yep.
We have no resignations.
We have Andy wanting to speak to Correspondent.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Jefferson, come on in.
Do we have any follow-up information on the select correspondence?
No, so I wasn't going to address that publicly, just because the person wanted it to remain anonymous. All I can say is that we will not comment on things that we are doing that are currently tied up in court. So, action
Very good.
is underway. Let's put it that way, I guess.
Okay.
Happy to follow up with you offline on, on that, Andy, as well.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Any other? Anything anybody wants to bring up? Very good. We have noted, no resignations. Do we have anybody on, in the public or on Zoom that would like to speak to anything?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, great. We have meeting minutes to approve. Ms. Foley?
I move the board vote to authorize the chair to approve the meeting minutes of July 18th of 2023.
Oh, no. Authorize the chair to approve?
Yep.
Yep.
That's so that I can approve these men, meeting minutes to submit with the application for the 40-hour
Oh, 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 okay.
And it'll save you guys the pleasure of
I was asleep, but
No, it was confusing.
She's spot on.
Okay. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Off, then aye.
Foley, aye.
All right, the motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Ms. Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Off, then aye.
Foley, aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you all.